All right, so everybody is here that was on the invitation. So I am going to go ahead and open this meeting of the Nottingham Select Board for Monday, March 23rd, 2020. We're going to forego the Pledge of Allegiance since I would expect that not many of us have a flag nearby.
We do.
I do.
Okay. All right. And before we start, I'm going to make an announcement. It is possible, in light of COVID-19 pandemic situation and the state of emergency declaration in New Hampshire, that most or all board members will be unable to attend public meetings in person because they are concerned about getting sick or perhaps are already sick. In cases where the presiding officer declares an emergency and the requirement of a physically present quorum is waived, the meeting of a public body may be conducted with most or all members participating electronically. I am therefore declaring an emergency for the purpose of Nottingham Select Board meetings until the COVID-19 pandemic situation has subsided.
So what does that mean in English, Tony?
In other words, that is our legal authority to have remote, online, remote meetings in this fashion. And we are still, I think we were actually exceeding our obligations under 91A because we are still broadcasting over the television. We are still providing the physical meeting space even though we now do not have to. And I also prepped a spare laptop that I had so that any public, any members of the public that do show up tonight, if they want to ask a question or make a comment, they can do so in the meeting by way of that laptop.
Hey, Chris?
Gets us through tonight.
Chris, yeah, gets us through tonight. Chris, my understanding is there is an emergency order signed by the governor today about electronic meetings. Am I correct in understanding that to mean that we don't have to provide the physical access as long as we provide the electronic access?
Yes, that came in, we got it in around.
Pass.
The electronic access that has to be provided is beyond our capabilities that we have right now. So if you look at the fine print on the governor's order, their stuff about what the public can be, has to be able to do electronically, what they would typically be able to do in the room. So until we figure out that piece, we're not going to get out of having a physical location. We may, over the next couple of weeks, figure a way to do that, but we couldn't do that this afternoon.
Okay. We'd just like to explore that.
Yeah, we would too. We just, that option became available to us as we were making sure that this option worked.
Yeah, literally.
Got it. Yep, got it.
Okay. Any other questions on that? No? All right. So obviously, meeting remote like this, we can't, you know, we don't see each other, so we're going to have to run things a little differently. For example, any votes we take will be roll call votes, and I'm going to ask that we do them in alphabetical order so that we don't, you know, talk over each other. And like I said, you know, keep your microphone muted unless, you know, it's, unless you need to talk. And then when you're done talking, just mute it again. And when you need to talk, don't forget to unmute your microphone because we do need to hear you.
Announce yourself.
And announce, yes, announce, you know, announce yourself when you speak so that Lorraine can keep accurate notes. You know, she needs to know who's talking and, you know, so she knows to annotate who said what. So for the people at home, just to explain what you're seeing on your television screen, this is a Microsoft Teams meeting window. There are only four panes in the middle, but across the bottom, you see these little circles with initials in them. Those represent the under, the other attendees in the meeting. For example, GF is for Gunner Foss, L is for Lorraine Petrini, our secretary, DS, that's Dale Silvia, the town health officer, Chris Sterndale, the town administrator. This is our guest access computer supervisor. The checklist is on. Tyler Eaton is on. Sean McLean is on. We have the fire chief, Jay Filchak, selectman John Moran, selectman Ben Bartlett, selectwoman Donna Danis. So those are who is with us tonight. And as different people speak, the circles in the four pane window that you see in front of you will change to reflect the initials of the person speaking. So that's pretty much what you're seeing in front of you. Not visually appealing. This is an audio-only meeting, so just pay close attention and you'll, you'll get the, you'll get the flow of town business as it's conducted tonight. All right. Do any of you have the television on channel 13 at home? Seeing the simulcast? I mean, I wouldn't turn it on with the audio up because you could get some serious feedback through your laptop, but, and there will be a delay as well. It's like a three-second delay between something happening and it getting out across the television. So be mindful of that, too, as people are talking, you know, conversing back and forth that there may be a delay so that we don't talk over each other. And with that, I think we're ready to get into the agenda. So I will actually start this off with our manifest as we always do. I'll make a motion that we approve the accounts payable manifest of March 23rd, 2020, and the payroll manifest of March 24th, 2020.
So just one question. I may have missed this because I was away. I do have the accounts payable, the invoices that Betsy sent. I don't have the payroll manifest. Did, did that get sent out as well? Just, I mean, I kind of know it's always been in the folder when we've looked at it, but...
Yeah. Let me, let me look. I thought we got both of them.
Again, I've been away, so I might have missed it, but if everybody else has it, then that's fine.
Yep. So, and all we need to do for purposes of tonight is just vote our approval and we can sign them at a later time. You know, as you filter. Say again?
Yeah. I guess one of them.
I'm having a hard time finding it in my email.
Okay, so just by way of process, if, if we're going to, for the period that we have to continue to do electronic meetings, we should make sure we get that in the, in the packet as well.
Yeah, agreed. So, Don, are you okay voting on this, or do you want the opportunity to inspect the payroll manifest?
Chris, I'm assuming nothing has changed?
No. No, it should be relatively routine. I don't think it's anything out of the ordinary, but I can, I can scan it and email it to you while we're doing other business here. So you'll have it in front of you.
Okay.
Just a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Again, Tony, I don't, you know, I'm not trying to be a jerk about it, but I'm just saying if this is the new mode for at least the time being, then we should make sure that we get copies of that as well.
No, I absolutely agree. This is the first time we've ever done this, so.
Correct, I understand.
We're, we're keeping notes of what we need to improve on to make this work properly. So it's absolutely a good point. All right, so Chris is going to scan that and send it to you, so we'll come back to that, if you're okay with that?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. All right. So the next item is minutes. We have minutes from March 19th, public and non-public. Did you guys have a chance to review those in your, in your emails?
March 19th?
Nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, nine.
Two weeks ago, nine.
I'm, I'm good with them.
This is Ben, I'm good with them too.
You are?
This is John, I'm good with them too.
And Tyler?
I'm good.
Okay, then I'll take a motion.
This is Tyler, motion to approve the March 9th minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, starting with Ben.
Whoever made the second should state their name just so Lorraine has it.
Yeah. Ben, Ben Bartlett made the second. Want to do roll call again?
Yep, roll call vote.
All right, I, Ben Bartlett, approve.
I, Donna Danis, approve.
Hi, Tony Dumas, approve.
Hi, John Warren, approve.
Hi, Tyler Eaton, approve.
Okay. It is unanimous.
Tony, who, who seconded the motion for the accounts payable manifest?
No one did, I don't think.
Yeah, no one did yet.
We're coming back to it.
We're coming back to that. Chris has, Donna.
Yeah, just so we can look at the payroll, Lorraine.
Okay, so we're coming back to it later in the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
All right. Did we do non-public? Did we get the non-public minutes?
This is Ben, I don't recall getting those.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't know that you did.
Yeah, okay, well, we can defer those till our next meeting then. Did you get that, Lorraine?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Next item, action items from our last meeting. I don't believe we had any because we were doing town, or, yeah, election and town meeting prep. Not fully expecting that town meeting would be postponed. Does anybody have any different recollection?
Nope.
Nope? Okay. All right, so moving on on the agenda, reports from assigned boards and committees, and I imagine it's going to be the same report from everybody, but we'll start with budget. Anything on budget?
They're done for the season.
Done for the season. And planning board?
Wednesday night will be the next meeting.
Are they, are they, are they postponing for quarantine?
They're going to try to set something up like this, meeting we're having tonight.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Anything with CIP?
Tony, that's been done.
What was that?
That, that's been done because the CIP is in preparation for the budget and the town meeting, so that's been done.
Okay, so they're, just like budget, they're done for the season?
Correct.
Okay. 300th and Marston?
Nothing on 300th.
Okay.
Yeah, nothing on Marston, and one thing about Marston is I, I think that this is going to impact our ability, maybe not to go after grants, but to kind of do that, corporate sponsorships and grassroots funding. I think, you know, essentially everything that's going to go on is putting a, pretty much a halt on that for now.
Yeah. Right, because we're focusing on, you know, publicity and fundraising at public events that aren't taking place right now.
Well, I don't think it's fair to ask businesses for money right now when they're dealing with bigger issues.
Yeah, exactly, that too. Yep. Okay. Moving on, town administrators' report.
I think everything I've got will cover throughout. I asked the department heads to come on and give you just a status report, talk through what they're dealing with, how they're approaching things. Most discussions probably around public works-related things, but I wanted you to hear from them directly.
Yeah. Really quick, can you guys hear Chris okay?
Yes.
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 All right. So that's, that's the stuff under COVID-19 state.
Yeah, what, I don't know what else is in between now and that.
COVID-19, elected and appointed officials, rules of procedure, but that's literally right up next. Dive into general business? Okay. All right. COVID-19 update.
Yeah, well, I think we can just go right, right to the department heads first and go from there.
Okay. So Gunner, you want to lead off and let us know how, how the department's doing and how you guys are holding up?
Yes, we set some guidelines, I think they're statewide at this point, for law enforcement, limited contact, non-emergency calls over the phone, and limited contact with people in our lobby. I've also asked that they attempt to reduce as much contact with motorists as they can, obviously enforce the speed, but I think the hunting plate lights and things like that can be foregone for a while.
How, how, how's the community holding up? Are we, are we seeing any elevation in break-ins or petty thefts or anything like that, or are things stable?
So far, stable, but we've decided that we need to put more road time in in neighborhoods. There's always some element.
I gotta interrupt, guys, I gotta break, I gotta go, we got a call.
Okay, Jake, thank you. More patrol in the neighborhoods to eliminate some of the thoughts of those people who would seek to take advantage. On the personnel front, my recruit who was in the academy was sent home last Monday. He starts tomorrow with remote learning. That'll go on until April 17th. They don't know what the hell they're going to do after that, so hopefully, when we get to the 17th of April, we'll have a better idea of how we're going to get him out of the academy and get him out on the road, FTO. Secondly, I found a full-time certified police officer, three-and-a-half-year veteran to replace the billet left vacant by Lieutenant Spagnu. You people have the appointment form. I've also provided Chris with his resume, and if there are specific questions regarding the individual, don't hesitate to give me a call, I'll, I'll answer any questions I We need to get his paperwork up to the academy. He's been over, he's been out of law enforcement for over 30 days. Their mandate is after 30 days to decertify, but where he's so close, we're probably going to just get a waiver, but I need to get the paperwork up there to the council. Other than that, unless you have something specific, I'm, I'm pretty much done and lucky to be on this thing. Thank you, Tony.
Hey, Chris, I'm sorry, hey, Gunner. How's the morale of the rest of the department and individuals, and is there anything that you need from the board relative to that?
No, I think we, no, they're doing very well, actually. They're a little nervous about the whole thing, I think, and I, I certainly understand that. They're even trying to limit contact with each other as best they can, but, you know, that, that's not feasible, really. And the only thing, you know, we, we discussed the last meeting, those things that are, you know, unnecessary, but that's going to happen going forward, I assume, so. But yes, I appreciate the, you're asking, I think that they're doing well. I think Chris will update you on my status, and that's all I have for now.
Thanks, Gunner.
Thanks, Gunner.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Gunner? Ben, John, Tyler?
John, good.
Gunner, if I have any questions, I'll just email you. This is Ben.
Okay, thank you.
You good, Tyler?
Yep, all set.
Okay. So Chief, as far as this new officer, you basically just need our, our signatures on the appointment form?
Yeah, correct. We've, we've already done a background. We went to Cheshire County, talked to his previous chief. We went to his previous department prior to that. So the only thing that we need to do at this point is square him in, get him hired, so that I can move the paperwork to the academy.
Okay. All right, so just for the rest of the board, you know, if you can make the opportunity to come down for signatures on this, we actually have a bunch of signatures to do, manifest and whatnot, so, yeah, if you can make your way down to Town Hall, yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, certainly, no problem. Thank you.
Where would our paperwork be, John?
It will be with Chris in the town office.
It'll be where the checks usually are in the tray on Betsy's desk. There's some colored folders there, around the corner of her desk where you usually pick up checks to sign.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. All right. Next up, Chief Filchak, but he just got a fire call, so I don't think he's there. Chief, Chief Filchak, you there? No, I think he's gone.
No, I just heard him sign on. He's, he's on the call.
He is on the call? Okay.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so next up, let's move on to Sean.
Hello, Sean here. You guys hear me?
Actually, we're going to jump to Dale Silvia first, health officer.
Hello, Dale Silvia.
Hey, Dale Silvia, how you doing?
I am well, thank you.
All right, what do you got for us?
So I'm going to actually do building first before health. We have dramatically cut down our inspections, and actually, the plan that we had, the governor came out with a statement today, and we were pretty much following that already. We've decreased all inspections that, we are still doing them, we're doing them through audio, video, calling and talking to the contractors, and basically what we're trying to do is not limit progress and growth and let these people still work where needed. We're not going to be the ones that's holding them up, but we're not going to actually do out inspections. In a few months from now, when this all clears up, whenever that is, we're going to go back and have a tremendous workload following up on everything, but for right now, we're just basically working with everyone. We're still asking the public and the contractors to send inspections in and permits and be pre-approved, and we're just working with them and cutting a lot of leeway. The one area that we are, I'm reluctant to cut down is new homes because I don't want to see people take advantage and start putting up houses all over the water and just say they snuck it in during this timeframe. So we're still working out with that one. It's going to depend a lot on the planning board and the zoning boards, though, because the governor did come out today and say we still have a 30-day approval window, and if we don't, then people can start building on their own. So that's something that we're going to have to follow closely on the building side. Do you have any questions about the building portion?
Dale, this is Ben. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You had mentioned that when you, when this, whenever this is done, you're going to have a backlog. Are you going to be able to handle this by yourself, or are you going to be able to need additional help?
I can't answer that question now. If this ends in a month, I'll be fine. If this goes on longer, I could probably use some help, but we'll deal with that when the time comes.
Okay.
Any other questions on the building side?
I have a question, this is Tyler, I have a question just for Dale as our health inspector. So day-to-day, there are all the meetings besides select board and meetings that, you know, Chris might have to deal with, or you might have to deal with, there's no meetings taking place in the building. Is that correct?
That is correct. There is some very brief face-to-face employees, but there are no official meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, right, today, it was just, you know, Chris and I had planned to be here to, you know, to administer the online meeting and take care of the video broadcast. If it wasn't for that, we would be home as well, and, and then, like I said, Gene joined us after the meeting started. So right now, it's just the three of us in the building.
So on the health side, and for the building side too, as, as far as workload, I will still be there every day in the mornings to be available for contractors via phone, and if there are any inspections that are warranted, mainly new homes, we'll still do that, and then our workload's going to be cut down, same on the health. So if the public is looking for us between 8:15 and 10:00 would be the, the time that you're going to get me.
Dale, did you have anything else to add or share with us on the health side?
The only other thing, we're not seeing any increase on the health side. The, the only thing that we're seeing is ironically, and I expect it to increase, is we're seeing more day-to-day complaints, and that's just because people are home, and I think that's going to rise dramatically. It's not directly related to COVID-19, but it is a side effect of people being at home. As of right now, everything is status quo.
Have, have there been any new guidelines or recommendations that you've received from the state on that side?
We are pretty much getting the same thing that the public is, that who is putting out, CDC, all of that. We don't have anything special that the public doesn't have access to, but we have been posting it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Dale's health briefing?
Thank you.
Ben, Ben, John, Tyler?
This is Ben, I'm good.
Okay.
This is John, I'm good.
This is Tyler, I'm good.
All right. Perfect. Anything else, Dale?
Uh, no, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, now. Now, Sean, your turn.
Hello, all, Sean here.
Yeah, how's, how are you guys holding up?
For the most part, everybody's in decent spirits. We got a little bit of snow tonight, we didn't expect, but we're going to handle that. So Chris and I, last week, developed a, a plan for the recycling center. That was the biggest challenge right out of the gate. You guys got an email last Friday describing what our plan is. You guys got an email last Friday describing what our plan is. Have you read that?
Yes.
That would be the for the service update dated March twenty-fourth?
Yes.
I see it. I got it.
All right, so that that will be gone, go into place on Thursday if it's if we decide that that's what we want to do tonight. So there will be no, nobody will be able to go inside the building. Everything will be done outside of the building. Be no cash transactions. We'll be commingling paper and cardboard. We will not be bailing anything anymore. Plastics will go in with the regular trash. Aluminum cans will go with the tin cans. Be a little bit more of a, we won't get as much money on the tin and the aluminum because it's commingled as we would be separate, but it's the, it's what we have to work with. So that's where we're going with that. There's some signage that was made up for people, clear signs that will be placed outside, helping with the transformation into these new processes that we're gonna implement this Thursday. After that, both the public, both public works and the transfer station people, personnel, are going to be broken up into twos. We have A and B. And what we will do is it'll be two people on one week and it'll rotate. And the people that worked that one week will have the following week off and the B crew will come in. That is going to limit contact with personnel. And just in case somebody does get it, we don't wipe out everybody. So with that said, I mean, we continue to practice social distancing, vehicle assignments. We're having, one person is assigned a vehicle. Nobody's riding in pairs. At the end of the shift, vehicles that would be wiped down and disaffected to the best of our abilities that we have. Let's see, we are, we're actually getting low on sanitizer supplies and we're actually going to pick up hand sanitizer at the end of this week from Flag Hill Distillery. They're going to give us a couple, three, five gallon pails of the hand sanitizer. So that will help out. You guys have any questions for me?
John, this is Ben.
Yep.
So what are you doing in the meantime? Do we have masks or rubber gloves or anything up there for?
Yes, we have latex gloves and masks. So the one thing that is the was the challenge tonight was because it's snowing and loading product. We all load our own trucks when we're sanding. So what we have done is the guys all have a mask and when they get out to get in the loader because it's, everybody's using it. They put their mask on and their latex gloves to operate the loader. That was all that I had to do to deal with that situation, so that's how we're handling it.
Okay, next on to you.
Sean, this is Tony. Question on the plastics recycling, is it, can we still recycle the plastics by dragging those plastic bag bins outside? Or do the bags have to be changed too frequently to be, to become impractical?
The handling is a high risk. It's a constant contact with handling the bags, the people going inside, you know, the touching of the doorknobs and all the other things that are associated with what you do when you go inside of that building doesn't present a healthy situation, so we're just eliminating it.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's why I meant if you, if you brought those those wire frames that hold the bags, if you brought them outside and lined them up against the wall so that they're out in the air, that way nobody has to go in the building still. But we could still sort the plastic and not lose as much revenue, but.
The plastic become, we handle the plastic a lot is the problem. You're always in contact with it because it's in the bags doesn't necessarily mean you don't touch it because pieces fall on the ground. When you compress a bale, you open up the bottom, you have to touch the bale when the forks come in to pick it up and et cetera. So there was, there's just too many risks associated with it, so that's why we came up with that.
Yeah, when the bag leaves the frame, it gets carried upstairs, depending on what flavor of plastic it is. Running different flavors of plastic through the baler at different times. So it's gotta get moved in the building. Sometimes it's moved around within the building and then it's loaded into the baler, which is kind of a sloppy process, getting from a big plastic bag into the baler itself. And then even when it's baled, you're hugging the thing around. It's more than just that initial point of contact where resident holds it in the bag.
Yeah, seeing that plastic is, is three days holding the virus.
Right.
So it's not worth the risk in our opinion.
No, agreed. All right, that makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions for Sean?
I'll just, thank you, Sean, for your continued leadership. Appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome.
Board members, you have a kind of a snapshot of what we plan to mail out. I know the, anytime anything changes, it can be tough for residents. The recycling center is, we're always reluctant to change anything up there because it's tough to reach everybody and educate them all, but anything, I sent you a kind of a draft of a mail out that we're gonna send tomorrow. It'll be online with this stuff tomorrow. Any other suggestions on?
I'm not, I'm not sure I saw that, Chris. Am I just missing them?
Yeah, it was a late today email titled.
Oh, I see. It was, okay. It was, I thought it was a duplicate of what you'd said before.
Miscellaneous Monday afternoon.
Yep, I'm cool with it.
It's Lorraine. I'm just suggesting that you do put it on the various Facebook pages. A lot of people will see it that way. There's, and there are several.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look for some help with that tomorrow.
Yeah, I can take care of that. Okay.
I think that's good, Chris.
Yeah, I think so, too. All right.
Anything else from a user perspective you can think of that? You know, Sean and I don't burn our trash there. We don't always see the world that way, but.
You know, my only concerns, and I did read this through, so, you know, the summary, so I'm less concerned now. You know, we saw with the swap shop, for example, how it was abused by some people to leave things that should not have been left. So I was, I was a little concerned at first that the, you know, the bulky waste would be abused, you know, by people if they know they don't have to pay for things or they think nobody's, there won't be enough people there to watch. But you know, it's a risk that we, you know, the risk of that is less than the risk of exposing more of our employees to be watching that stuff constantly.
Yeah, we talked through that with the staff and we also have to, unfortunately, we have to balance the risk of the stuff just being left on the side of the road or at the dump gate, which is not unheard of. You know, somebody, somebody loads their vehicle and can't get rid of it at the dump. It's not going home in a lot of cases, so. It's not uncommon for stuff to appear on the sides of roads. We're trying to balance against that as well at the same time.
Hey, Chris. So I think as far as the service update goes, I think this is really good. I'm wondering, should we put something in this same communication about how, at least for the short term, we're going to be conducting meetings?
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
I'm wondering if for the short, if we should, at least for the short term, identify how we will be holding meetings. Since this is, this is kind of a good update about what's going on with each of the different areas.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll stop in there. We probably won't have all the answers, but we will mention that, you know, business goes on and where people can find that information.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
And just a quick side note on the meetings. Obviously, we were, we were working to find a solution that got us through tonight. But what we're gonna be looking at going forward is the appropriate Microsoft licensing to do, to do a proper Skype broadcast meeting, which would allow public participation. Like public input as well over Skype. And we're also gonna look at Zoom alternatively. You know, similar capability, a little different layout, but we're gonna look at both of those, compare costs. And we'll have some communication with the board about that as an, you know, an emergency measure soon.
Yeah, my, my concern there, Tony, is that people not have to download something special to their computers in order to participate in the meeting.
Yeah, with the Skype broadcast meeting, which was the first thing I tried, people could have done Skype online, so they would, could have joined the meeting directly through a browser. But we learned very quickly that we were not licensed for it. This, what we're doing tonight with Teams is only possible because we have an organizational license for Teams through our Office 365 subscription. But this piece of it is only open to town employees and officials. It's not.
I get that. I just, I just think as I get that. I just think as we figure out how we're gonna do this moving forward, that we make sure it's as easy for folks in the public who might want to log in as well. And to me, that means not having to download something to your desktop.
Agreed, agreed. That's, yeah, if you.
So I don't care whether it's Skype or Zoom or whatever. It's just let's make it easier for people.
Agreed. And then for people that don't have internet access, we may even put out like, you know, texting to a phone number or to a specific account for people that, you know, don't have internet access, but they can, they could listen in on their phone or something like that. I don't know. We're, we're still working on all those options. But we'd love to have a very wide public participation window. You know, since the option of showing up at a meeting is kind of off the table for a while, so. And I may be reaching out to some of the board members to, to help test, right, test our options. So stay tuned on that. But all things told, I think we did pretty good getting this set up tonight, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it went surprisingly well so far. Knock on wood. So, all right. Sean, did you have anything else for us or are you, are you good?
I believe so, unless you guys have any other questions that I didn't answer for you. I think I'll be heading down there to get in a truck and go pour some snow.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay, we've actually got one question for Sean from Gene. You can talk and my thing will pick it up.
Gene, we're 345 State Road. Sean, I was wondering about not recycling the aluminum. Can we not segregate that externally from the building and preserve our revenue stream, both for the steel and the aluminum, because the steel, as you mentioned, becomes problematic when you have aluminum mixed in and vice versa. Is there a way to containerize aluminum for crushing that a further future date?
Those, that will be looked at Thursday once we start implementing all these other changes. At the initial onset of these changes, no, we couldn't do it based on how we were gonna staff people, just having the two people there for Thursday, Friday and Saturday. The way that the aluminum is loaded into the container is with the bucket of the skid steer that's there. So if we can get it down off on the area where the roll-off cans are, then we will do that. Like Chris and I said, this is very fluid and we, we expect to make changes as it goes. We don't have a SOP or a format to follow for something like this. So we're just, we're gonna try to make adjustments as they go and try to recycle as much as we can.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sean, I actually had a question. It's Lorraine.
Yes.
Are you considering limiting the amount of people that drive into the recycling area or asking them to spread out further? Or are you just hoping that they'll do that on their own?
We're hoping that all the, the public announcements that are being made, both on the federal and the state governments about social distancing, will follow suit up there as well. If we find that it's becoming an issue, we might have to do something different and maybe I have to talk to Gunner about helping out with something up there.
Did you get that, Ben?
Thanks.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you, Sean, and stay warm, stay safe.
All right, guys. Thank you very much for all your support.
Thank you, Sean.
Have a good night.
Good night.
All right, and next up, I actually want, I want Chris to give us a, just a quick briefing on Town Hall staff, you know, how's everybody holding up? How's the skeleton crew working out?
Good. We're, we are kind of skeleton crew in rec. One's working at home, the other's working a couple days at home. Land use is mixed. The main office, finance and reception, and I pretty much been here every day. We're all juggling a little bit at home around childcare and stuff like that. Spirits are good. Concerned, looking farther in the future, but, you know, everybody's chipping up and walking away.
And as far as exposure risk, do you think, you know, do, are you concerned about the level of exposure with everybody that's still coming to Town Hall? Or you think you may need to scale back further or?
We could, we could scale back further. We probably could, we could, we could be more careful than we are. We, you know, we're still operating, the, those of us that are in the building, that includes our elected officers, are pretty much operating as we always have. I mean, we're passing paper back and forth, genes here. We're trying to be mindful of it, but we could, we could do less. We, and we all want to think we're indispensable and have to be here. We could do with less. I think we've been kind of anticipating that, that we would be told by the governor that everybody, it really wasn't essential, essential, had to stay home. So we've been kind of waiting for that and it hasn't happened.
Could you do it, could, those who are in the building, with maybe the exception of like Tom Clark, could you do it from home, Chris?
Some of it, yes. And we've got, we've got enough remote capability. We can do a lot of it. We've really been committed to being able to answer the phone when we're supposed to be open as an office. There's really, you know, under the nine-one-one, there is no place in town that you can always count on that being the case. So we really try to always have somebody there to answer the phone. We could do that without everybody working every day, certainly.
So silly question, Tony, maybe you can provide some insight to this, but is there any way that we could set up like a temporary phone number that people could call that would route to say? would route to say Chris's number or somebody else's number, that would still give the capacity to call the office, but people don't have to be in the office, and we don't have to give out individuals' private numbers? Or is it as simple as, like, a call for...
Technically, we can do that, we, our current phone system...
Yeah, Comcast Business, yeah, so, yeah, we have that at UNH, too, we have a call forwarding system, where, like, right now, I have my desk phone configured to forward phone calls to my cellphone, you know, obviously, I get, I'm still getting sales calls in the middle of all this, believe it or not, but, but yes, that is, yeah.
So, I don't know if that helps you at all, Chris, or, you know, if it helps the not exactly being in the office situation?
Yeah, I think, I mean, certainly, if we get, if we get in order to, to lock down, we will do something like that, we will rotate that phone coverage during business hours, and somebody could sit down and do that.
Dale Sylvia, I have a question, please. I think that's a good idea, but it would really be dependent upon, majority of us are very dependent upon Avatar, and we reach out as a town to them and see if that is a way of accessing that, that that's what it would depend upon, within the phone calls.
Who is that?
Dale Sylvia.
Oh, there you are, okay.
Yeah, we've done that on a limited basis, we don't, we don't have real strong VPN capabilities, but we've been patching that together this week, remote access to Avatar. All of them, tax collect, inspector, assessing, and then you need to be able to get to all of them to really be a factor remotely.
So, one thing we can explore that would be relatively short money is a private VPN just for the town hall, so that designated staff can connect to that VPN and then remote into their own workstations and then work as they would, just as if they were sitting here, and we can do that for relatively short money. I'm thinking less than, less than two grand, fifteen hundred possibly, so if it's a critical enough need, we can put that together in fairly short order, so.
How much lead time would you need for that, Tony?
Just the amount of time it takes to get the hardware.
Okay.
I can configure it, industry-standard encryption and algorithms, yeah, it would be a very, a very safe tunnel from, you know, an employee working at home, remoting into their town hall desktop, and then working as, as normal. I do it every day, so, so, yeah, but it is doable. So, apart from that, do you, do you see any need to scale back further right now, or do you want to keep that in your pocket until you think it's necessary? Like, alternate staff, one-on-one-off, or anything like that?
All right, well, that, we would have done that, if we'd gotten a lockdown order at any point in the last week, we would have done that by today or tomorrow, probably, anyway. So, that would be our next step. It would be great if we could be more productive from away, what we have isn't really tested in that regard yet.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any other questions for Chris on town operations during this time? Anyone?
Yeah, this is Ben, real quick, I just had a quick question in regards to, Sean's not with us anymore, is he?
No, he's plowing.
Okay, so, so, I know he said something about two people on, and then the ball league additional team, those who aren't working, what are we doing for pay? Because I know some of those folks rely on that income, and if they're not working, are they expected to get paid, how are we going to help them, especially in this environment that we're currently living in?
Yeah, we're, that's all coming together, for this, for the pay period that just ended, we didn't, we didn't have any downtime, you know, because of all this. Just yesterday, we started getting some guidance on the Stafford Act, which is the main reimbursement mechanism for things like FEMA disasters. It looks like we will be able to keep everybody whole with some federal reimbursement, and in some cases, maybe a limited use of sick time for anybody that's...
Did they give you, did they give you a timeframe on that, because I know we're dealing with the federal government, these programs take forever to process?
Uh, they're telling us ninety days on reimbursement, the harder part is when does it kick in, and I, the last answer I saw was April 2nd, so...
So, are we going to pick up the tab in the meantime, you think, or?
Yeah, what I've told our departments, and I sent y'all an email about this before we did this round of payroll, I said, we're going to keep everybody whole, that's, you know, all our permanent people, fully on part-time, at least in the short term here, until we figure out what, you know, what kind of help we're going to get from the feds, really, it's hard for you to make a decision on paying people off. Our posture, our promise to our employees is that until we get that figured out, we're going to, we're going to keep everybody whole.
Okay, great. All right, I'm sure that'll put some mind at ease, thank you, Chris.
Yeah, it's, it's not something we can be, I don't feel comfortable being open-ended about it, because we don't know how long this is going to go on, so, we didn't make any forever promises, but...
In the short term, though?
Yeah, and, and we need these people to respond and come to work when we need them to come to work, and when this is all over, we need them, too, so, we can keep that in mind as well.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
You'll, you'll hear more from, from me between now and your next meeting about, that's the biggest financial piece that's kind of a wild card for us right now, and also, just the, you know, we, we don't have a budget right now, so, we'll give you a snapshot of that at your next meeting. We're fine in terms of being legal, we've got the authority to spend what we need, we've got the cash flow, we don't have any worries right now, but we, you know, it's, a third of the year is over, or a quarter of the year is over, and this is going to impact a lot of our major projects and our capital purchases this year, so I hope two weeks from now give you a snapshot of what we're looking at there.
So, Chris, when you say we can spend what we need, are there, you know, any qualifications around that, it's kind, it, it, does that mean that, like, we can't put, we can't spend money on everything in the budget, but only those things that are necessary, like payroll or that kind of stuff?
We're putting, in simplistic terms, we're operating with last year's budget and last year's purposes, you know, we have the authorization to spend on certain things and a certain amount of money. Everything that we're doing to date, or virtually everything we're doing to date around the virus response is kind of routine business.
Yeah.
You know, we've got small money here and there that may be different, but we've not had a need to go out and make a major capital purchase to respond to this, or, you know, replace a bridge or something like that, so, we've got enough breathing room for the short term, until Conker figures out, you know, what specifically they're going to tell us, we're operating under the governor's order and the law that says, without a budget, you act like you're on last year's budget. It's simplified, but that's the gist of it.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is Tony, we heard earlier this week, late last week, through the school board, that they were, it came out that they were continuing to pay their bus provider, but the bus provider laid off their employees all the same. Do we have any service providers that are pulling antics like that, that we...
Tony, this is Ben, Tony, it's my understanding, I thought the transportation company reverted back to paying the drivers, is that, did that not happen? I thought that's what occurred, because there was a big uproar over that.
Yeah, there was, I believe that was the report over the weekend, was that they had changed their mind and, and agreed to continue paying their employees, you know, which was ethical, given that they were continuing to receive revenue from the school district, so, I'm just, I was just curious, do we have any service providers that are doing something like that, because that's...
Well, I believe it's in their contract, isn't it, that we'll provide payment up until June 30th?
That, that I don't know.
It's a teacher's contract?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a school issue, but I, I raised, I raised the point just for comparison, just for context.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, we don't have anything comparable, I'm not aware of any, anybody getting indirectly shorted by the town somehow or anything, but I don't have anything comparable.
Okay. All right, that's, that's good. All right, is that all you got for us, Chris?
I'm probably forgetting something, but yes.
Okay. Oh, uh...
You're going to cover the appointment? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get to that.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's on the agenda, so, actually, it's next on the, did anyone have any, any other questions for Chris before we move on with the agenda?
This is Ben, I'm good.
I'm good.
Is that John?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Tyler, Donna?
I'm good.
All good.
Okay, perfect. All right, moving on the agenda, next up is elected and appointed officials.
All right, so you have a memo for me that gives you kind of a status report on where you are with appointed and elected officials. The biggest area of concern and reaction for you are, first and foremost, the treasurer. As I outlined in that memo, the person that won the election is not going to take the job. We haven't identified anybody that's interested. I inquired with school officials if they wanted to do anything alongside you, or in partnership with you, or any way to collaborate on that, I didn't hear anything back, though they did ask us to post something that they're looking for, so I think we have their answer there. And we have Cheryl Travis willing to continue, at least for some period of time, but it would not be fair to her to drag that on indefinitely, so, I started beating this drum in October or November, and somebody came out of the woodwork at the last minute for this election, but we're back where we were in September, October, and I don't know where to go, so I need, I need your action on that front. Deputy Town Clerk is another gap, this slowdown in business is probably a blessing in that we're going through a transition on that next week, but we, that job is not suited for a single person, you need the depth, you need the, just for the sake of the sanity of the person in that chair, you need a competent deputy. The workload's too much, probably, for, for one person, so, we have posted a position there, but haven't got a lot of responses, I don't think, I haven't heard from Sandy lately about that, but we could use your help on recruiting there. So, those are the two big holes at the moment, that we've not identified deeply for.
Hey, Chris, this is Ben. Can you hear me?
Yep.
If we, in any one of these positions, particularly the deputy clerk's position, could we temporarily appoint someone, or does it have to be for the entire term?
Uh, it's the Town Clerk's appointment, so this would become Lori's decision on who that person is, we offered to help with that process, but that's her decision, I think her preference would be that it would be a long-term person, because there's a big training curve there.
And what about for the treasurer, could it, could it be temporary, I mean, obviously, we want somebody there long-term.
I'd say the training is a little easier there, you would prefer to have somebody long-term, but if you got jammed up, you could use somebody on a bridge fashion, I mean, we're, we're looking at an election next March because of that vacancy, so we're, you know, if we could find somebody that would be willing to commit to it through the next town meeting, that would be ideal.
Okay.
Hey, Chris, with, sorry, go ahead and finish, Ben.
No, I might have somebody interested in that, I'll, I'll reach out to them again.
Hey, Chris, just a, just a crazy wild idea, as far as treasurer goes, I don't know what the parameters are around, you know, how you fill that job, but can you get somebody from, like, a temp agency or something like that, that we pay on an interim basis to just kind of fill that gap as long as we need it, versus having no one?
It has to be a resident.
Okay.
So, that...
Okay.
You could have those kinds of skills through a temp agency, but this is a statutory position, not a, not an employee.
Okay. What's the risk, how big is the risk of not having one? Like, I know the treasurer signs the checks, and we have the checks and balances by having the treasurer plus a select board member sign checks, I assume we can go forward temporarily with just a select board member signing the checks, is that correct?
No, we, the treasurer, the treasurer is the check signer, honestly, the bank doesn't even care about the second signature.
So, what are we doing for the next payroll?
You, no, we have, we have a treasurer, the treasurer's still in office, and she's still forming students.
Okay.
You know, if, if all you want is a check signer, and you don't want that check and balance, then you can appoint anybody to play that role, but I think you probably want a little bit more than that.
Yeah, no, I agree, okay.
So, that's those two.
Chris, Chris, do we have a specific write-up of what the responsibilities are for that position?
Uh, I started one, I finished it yet, I'll get it out to you tomorrow.
Because that might help.
Yeah.
Are there statutory duties that are...
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty simplistic, you know, broad, simplistic, this is your, this is your job, but we, so we'll combine that with some practical, this is what it really takes to do the job, we should have that out tomorrow.
Okay.
And because their signature is required on the check, it's not like we could have somebody who spends, you know, January and February and March in Florida, but the rest of the year here, right?
If you had a functioning deputy, you could get away with that, but...
Okay.
We're about to have neither.
Okay.
Do you have someone in mind?
No.
Oh, okay.
So, that's, that's those two holes, we have another hole with Gene Reed stepping down as tax collector, his term was to end last week. Was it last week? Gene's in the room.
Down meeting day.
Was that a week ago?
Four weeks.
Is that two weeks, I don't even remember.
Nine days ago.
Okay. So, in that instance, you, you, the board, have to appoint someone until the next election? You have an elected official at your fingertips, and Tracy Black, who won the election to take Gene's place and is ready to go, she's prepared to come in tomorrow with your appointment and commence those responsibilities, and we also have a request from her that came in today, or to appoint Gene Reed as her deputy, so Gene would go from being the tax collector to being nobody for six or eight hours to being a deputy. hours to being deputy tax collector, while Tracy Black became the tax collector. That all works legally, seems to work for the parties involved, and we are ready to make that happen if you are comfortable with it.
So, Chris, I'm sorry, do you need a motion on both Tracy and Gene or just on Gene?
We need one on Tracy because that position is vacant until the town, the delayed town meeting closes. We have a weird window here where...
Hey, Chris? Chris, this is Ben. So just out of curiosity, Gene is not obligated to finish out that term until the town meeting? Or that's not how it works?
He would be in office through that meeting, but for his resignation. Every office continues until the successor is newly elected or appointed.
All right.
Chris, is it okay to do them both in one motion?
Yes.
I have the language for the motion here. If, once everybody's done with questions and whatnot, I'm ready to make the motion. Does anyone have a...
I'm good with Tony.
You good with it? Anyone else?
I'm good.
Tyler?
I'm good.
Okay, and Donna?
Yep.
You're good? All right. So I'll make a motion pursuant to RSA 669:67 that the select board appoint Tracy L. Black as tax collector and Eugene Reed as deputy tax collector.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Does Jean make comment on that?
Because of the motion.
Okay.
I think that the tax collector appoints and then the board approves.
Yes, is that what it said?
No, it's not the motion, so I just want to be accurate.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening because I got a motion.
Yeah, yeah.
You appoint the tax collector and you approve the appointment of the deputy.
But after Tracy makes the...
Yes, and you have that, you have that email from her.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, we have her recommendation. Oh, wait, no.
You have an email. You may not have it there.
So that's...
So you're doing two motions.
Okay.
Put the page over. There's a motion there to appoint Tracy as tax collector.
Okay. Hey, Tony?
Yeah, yeah, no, I read the motion wrong, so I'm gonna rescind it and we're gonna do them separately.
Hold on, I got a quick question, Tony, before you do that again. Did, or is Gene still in the room?
Yeah, yeah, he's here.
All right, did he have a deputy?
Yes, yes.
Oh, you did have a deputy?
Yes, this is Jean. We do have, we did have a deputy. It is Heidi Savars.
Okay.
She does not wish to continue in the job after my resignation, and she has turned in her keys as of today.
Okay.
She was queried as to whether we would have either positioned this matter, and she has declined.
Okay, thank you, Jean.
Respectfully, she has no problems.
Okay, thanks, Jean. All right, so I rescinded my previous motion, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna make them again as two separate motions. So first motion, I'm gonna make a motion that pursuant to RSA 669:67 that the select board appoint Tracy L. Black as tax collector.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Hi, Ben Bartlett, approve.
Approve, Donna Danus.
Tony Dumas, approve.
John Warren, approve.
Tyler Eaton, approve.
Okay, it's unanimous. All right, and then the second motion is to approve the appointment. Oh, there it is. No?
Approve the appointment of Jean as deputy.
Okay. Okay. Make a motion that the select board approve the appointment of Eugene Reed as deputy tax collector.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Ben? Can you come back to me?
I approve, Donna Danus.
Tony Dumas, approve.
John Warren, approve.
Tyler Eaton, approve.
Tyler, okay.
Ben Bartlett, approve.
Approve, okay. It's unanimous. All right. All right, is that all we had for appointments?
And then one last one at the end of that memo. There's all kinds of gymnastics going on with the library trustees. They are effectively running with four of them at the moment, and we've got two that are, well, one that's an alternate, one that was elected and is about to take office when town meeting finishes. And while that was going on, the library trustees also recommended to you another alternate, Kate Knight Dupuy. And if you wish to appoint her as an alternate, they will have a full five to get them through until town meeting is completed. Does that make sense?
So what, what, what do we actually have to vote on tonight? Just the alternate?
Correct.
So was that, was that clear to everyone?
Yep.
Anyone else? We're good?
We're good.
Okay. All right, then I'll make the motion pursuant to RSA 202-A:10. The select board appoints Kate Knight Dupuy as alternate library trustee.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Hi, Ben Bartlett, approve.
Donna Danus, approve.
Tony Dumas, approve.
John Warren, approve.
Tyler Eaton, approve.
All right, it's unanimous. Okay, and so that was it on appointments?
Correct.
Okay. All right, moving on to the agenda, we are at rules of procedure and committee assignments. All right, so before we dive into this, I just, I want to get the board's opinion about, you know, with all this emergency stuff going on, I haven't had a lot of time to put thought in about this, and I want to get the board's feeling about whether you're comfortable putting this off for a couple of weeks. I mean, normally, we do this procedural item at our first meeting after an election, but given the current situation, I, I don't expect that any of us have put a lot of thought into this. You know, are there any changes to the board's rules that we want to make? Does anybody want to switch committee assignments and so on? So I guess that's my question. Would we, do we want to, are we comfortable putting this off until our next meeting?
I'm prepared to do it tonight, Tony.
You are?
Yeah. I mean, I think it's just kind of common. It's not anything that we usually put meetings worth of thought into.
Yeah. You know, Ben, John, Tyler, what's your thoughts?
John Warren here. I'm comfortable doing it.
Ben? What do you think? Six one half dozen the other. We do it now or do it next week? I mean, the crisis isn't going to go away, so, you know, either we work through it as we are or we just change things up. I mean, really up to the board, I guess, at this point. You know, I'm good with whatever the rest of the board decides. Okay. Tyler, what do you think?
I just would, Ben said, same way. Either way, good.
Okay. All right, well, that makes it easy. Does anybody want to switch committee assignments or are we happy?
I have the committee.
I'd be more than happy to give that to you, John. Which one were you asking about, John?
Budget committee.
So, John, you want to go to budget? And Ben, would you take planning in his place, just like an exchange?
So time out, Tony, just with all due respect to the process.
Yeah.
I think part of it is, you know, again, with all due respect to you and the, you know, great job that you've done over the past year, I think it starts with kind of the chair and the vice chair, does it not?
Yes, good point.
Yeah.
Yes. We start top down, so.
Yeah, because then, because then committee assignments kind of fall out of it from there, I think.
Yes. Yep, that was actually a point of order.
And so I just, I'll throw it out there, I think, given that the, kind of the history of this has been for, you know, people to kind of rotate and to get experience in the different positions, I'll suggest that since Ben has been the vice chair for the past year, that we give Ben the opportunity to be the chair in the year coming forward.
I would agree with that.
What do you think, Ben? I'm always looking forward to a challenge. I'm up to it, but really would like the support of the entire board. Yeah, I'm okay with it, as long as I'm not, you know, as long as we're not putting too much on you, given your other obligations. But I'm, I'm okay with it if you're, if you're willing.
Yep.
Chris, does this, Chris, does this require a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we appoint Ben as chair of the select board for the coming year.
And Tony will second that. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Crickets.
I, Donna Danus, approve. Ben, you can vote.
Oh, okay, I approve, Ben. Tony Dumas, approve.
John Warren, approve.
I'm still thinking about it. Yeah, I approve. Yeah, that's good.
Thanks, Tyler.
I'll make a further motion that John Warren be appointed vice chair.
I'll second that.
Hey, how does Tyler get away with not serving?
Oh, wait, sorry.
I'm on planning board.
Oh, yeah, 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 but, you know, how long you been on the board? Have you served in vice yet? Come on, Tyler.
I've given lots of advice, yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for John. Did we get a second on that?
I don't really second.
I, Tyler Eaton, I seconded it.
Okay. All right, roll call, vote.
I, Donna Danus, yes.
Hi, Ben Bartlett, yes.
Hi, Tony Dumas, yes.
Hi, John Warren, yes.
Hi, Tyler Eaton, yes.
All right, congratulations, both of you.
So before we talk about committees and assignments, I wanted to throw something out, and, you know, Chris, I'll look for your feedback on this as well, but one of the things that I think that this board hasn't done a great job of recently is with community communications, and I think a lot of it has kind of fallen to Chris and team when there's, you know, certain things like what's going on now, right? And having to communicate in response to something that's going on. But we haven't done a good job about making sure that we have information in the community newsletter. Potentially, if, you know, SB two passes, there's going to be a great need for us to communicate about what's going on, you know, with our budget and why we're asking for certain things. So what I would like to propose is that I would like to take on, rather than one of the other committees, is I'd kind of like to take on the role of, for lack of a better term, communications point for the board, to make sure that we're hitting those deadlines for the newsletters, make sure we're getting communications out there, work with Chris and team on, you know, what we should have on the website and that kind of information. So, so I'm throwing it out there. I don't know, Chris, first of all, would you find that to be helpful to you guys?
Yes, the need to improve our outbound communication is certainly, that's clear. You know, we just don't, we don't have the mechanisms in place that we need to, particularly if we get into an SB two environment. So, yes, some help there would be useful.
I like the idea.
Yeah, me too.
So is this a new, would this be a new position to vote on?
It kind of is a new responsibility to vote on. I mean, I think in the past, it's kind of been like the, the hot potato has been passed to the chair to kind of do the community newsletter updates, and therefore, even when I was chair, I admit, it didn't get done sufficiently. But I think in light of everything going for where we're headed, I think we need to kind of take that a little bit more seriously.
I agree. I think I only made one contribution during my time as chair, and we, we kind of came up flat with ideas of things to write about, so. So I agree, I think we should step up and take that more, more seriously. Absolutely.
So what would be the technical name for this position?
Outreach coordinator?
Yeah, I would just call it board, board communications.
Yeah. Liaison or something? Yeah, something like that. Do we want to get the traditional assignments taken care of first? Well, John is enthusiastically, is in favor of taking budget, so we've already started, so I say we keep rolling with it. All right, I nominate John Warren to be the board representative to the budget committee. Second. Ben, a second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Hi, Ben Bartlett, approve.
Hi, Ben Bartlett, approve.
I, Donna Danus.
You, you approve?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Tony Dumas, approve.
John Warren, approve.
Tyler Eaton, approve.
Okay, congratulations, John. You are now the Budget Committee Representative. Planning Board? Who was up for planning?
I think you'd be perfect, Tony.
Well, actually, the, the only one I haven't done yet is CIP. I was kind of looking, looking to get in on that one.
Yeah, I would, I would say that CIP is really, really easy. I don't think we had more than three meetings this time, and I, I think we kind of, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we kind of talked about more about kind of like the board overall assuming responsibility for that. Because there's-
It has to have those other parties, uh, and planning board, school board, there, there has to be a committee. But I think we're at the point now where the OSIC staff does ninety-eight percent of the work on that, and it's mostly just an education effort of a very small number of people.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a full-time job, but it's kind of-
Okay. Then, yeah, I can, I can certainly do another stint with the Planning Board. I'm, I'm fine with that.
I mean, I, I certainly want to stick with Marston. What else is left?
Three hundred?
I'll stick with that if you want me to.
Yeah, for continuity's sake, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Do any of these need motions?
Uh, nominations, really. No?
No, I mean, as long as you're all in agreement, then
It's good enough, okay. All right. It's just a procedural thing, it doesn't have, okay.
Can you repeat those then again? Donna will do?
Donna is going to do Select Board Communication and Outreach, and also uh, be the Board's Representative to Marston. Tyler-
What was the other one after that one?
Uh, Marston?
No, what will Tyler do?
Tyler is going to stay with the three-hundredth anniversary committee. And Tony is going to do another round as the Select Board Rep to the Planning Board.
Got it, thanks.
So should Tyler also be the CIP?
Sure. I nominate Tyler to also be the Select Board Representative to the CIP Committee.
Second.
Roll call, vote, oh wait, yeah, might as well. Roll call.
Hi, Ben Bartlett, approve.
I, Donna Danus, approve.
Hi, Tony Dumas, approve.
Hi, John Warren, approve.
Hi, Tyler Eaton, approve.
Cool, thanks for agreeing to that, Tyler.
Thank you, Tyler.
You'll have to carve out four hours of the year, Tyler, for this one.
Yeah, just so everybody knows, Chief Vilchak is back. If you're all ready, we could, if, if he's ready, we can get our, our briefing from the Fire Chief.
That'd be good.
Sound good?
Yes.
All right. Chief Vilchak, how you doing?
Not bad. How are you? Sorry I had to leave. Everybody hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. Uh, I'll just, right off the bat, I just want to say, uh, similar to other departments, we've changed our non-emergency procedures here at the station. Uh, we're not doing any of the car seat checkups, any CPR classes. Uh, we're trying to limit our interface, both for the protection of the public and our members. Uh, we modified our fire, our daily fire permit process, that's been posted, so that's been going rather smoothly. Uh, department-wise, uh, we've, 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 we've got some concerns. Those concerns have all been, uh, you know, we're relaying those concerns to, at the state level through the, uh, the regular scheduled Homeland Security, Fire Marshal Office, EOC-type meetings, uh, where we have concerns about PPE shortages and impact on members, and they've been addressing, addressing them. Not all the solutions are in place, but they, they are forefront. We've answered several of their data calls requesting what we have on hand for personal protection equipment, uh, so we can continue our mission. So we're working through all of that, okay? We've, uh, we've instituted some new policies here that are unique and, and hopefully temporary uh, for our members here for response requirements during this period. Uh, one of the big concerns are, uh, knowing about an unprotected exposure, uh, to, to this, to this virus. The state has provided us with, uh, with a very, uh, very useful algorithm that, uh, that identifies what, uh, what the expectations are, uh, if we are unfortunately confronted with an unprotected exposure of one of our members. On a daily basis, uh, we're verifying, uh, you know, the current health of our, our duty crew, whoever's working, to, to make sure that, uh, they're not showing any symptoms. And, uh, you know, we have a, we have a, a process in place to, uh, to quickly, uh, take care of that via quarantine. The state, this, I, I keep on saying the state, because I'm, I'm kind of impressed with the, the response that they've been provided. They've, they've come up with different quarantine, uh, solutions for firefighters and EMTs throughout the state. As of today, it was reported that there are thirty-four firefighter EMTs, uh, that are, are in quarantine right now because of suspected unprotected exposure, okay? Let me see what else I got scribbled down here. Uh, we're monitoring, okay? Basically, basically, that, that's, uh, that's about it right now. Uh, we're, we're continuing, uh, continuing in the training of our, our newest full-time member. Uh, I expect him to probably go out and, uh, starts, we'll, we'll start separating him out on a separate shift, uh, the beginning of the next pay period. Other than that, if you have any questions, uh, or anything you'd like me to specifically address, uh, I'm right here, okay?
Hey, Chief, it's Ben.
How you doing, Ben?
Good, good. Uh, I only got caught part. I have a bad connection here. So, I just, just curious, you've got enough protective, uh, barrier, uh, equipment, like masks and gloves for now, right?
We, we have an ample, ample supply. Uh, we have, we have it scoped out for the number of trans sports that we, and, and there's different, different requirements based on what the level of, uh, of our participation is in the call. But, uh, right now, we are not in a critical shortage. I've put in requests for additional. Uh, we're not, we're not, we're not shut down as of yet, okay?
Okay, and-
That inventory, Ben, I'll give you some more detail. We're tracking the inventory very closely. Uh, it's, it's in a controlled environment also, uh, controlled, uh, so that, uh, uh, we keep, we keep track of where we're at, and we'll be able to alert, uh, alert the right, right people when we do hit that, that critical portion, okay, that critical step, okay?
But if you have a member, just one full-time member, that could detrimentally affect your department for coverage, correct?
Uh, one full-time, one call member, it doesn't really matter what, uh, what they're carrying in their wallet as far as, uh, you know, one member, one member can, uh, can, unless it's identified and addressed in a quick fashion, it could, it can, uh, it could have a real, real good, uh, real bad effect on, uh, on a department, that's for sure, as far as losing members. Because, uh, you know, through the quarantine period and get well period, that's assuming there aren't any serious complications. It could be over two, it is over two weeks, okay? Two weeks a lot.
Do you have measure, measure, I'm sure mutual aid probably will fall into that, uh, coverage if we fall.
Our normal, our normal mutual aid channels would, uh, would be where we, where we would rely on.
Okay.
And, and you got to put it this way, uh, and once we get in that situation, that we're in uncharted territory, and I don't want to alarm anybody, and especially the public in this, that, uh, the mutual aid, uh, departments, everybody in the seacoast is going to be equally taxed. So, uh, we've got to be smart, and that's where, uh, you know, the, the quarantine, the people isolating, that's, that's our best bet right now is not to spread this around, uh, you know, community-wise, and, and heed those warnings, because that, that's our best way of, uh, of keeping it from, uh, from, uh, getting totally out of control.
And I assume, I assume you probably cleanse the ambulance after every use.
Absolutely. We have a, we have an infectious control policy that's been in, in place, and, uh, we've augmented and picked out different pieces and included, increased the tempo of the cleaning. And in fact, the station cleaning tempo has been increased to, uh, you know, every, every shift, kind of even the, the per diem shift coverage, uh, state cleaning, critical areas in the station also. So, yes, we are, we are addressing it that way. We've had, we've had a few, uh, members of the community stop by and donate, uh, we had some cleaning products donated, and we've had a couple additional, uh, N95 masks donated from a resident town who had, uh, had, had some that weren't being used. They were being used during some remodeling project. But, uh, you know, that's, that sort of stuff. Our suppliers have, uh, like everybody else, we seen this, we, we were, we were, we were, uh, we experienced a shutdown from the suppliers, I would say, the end of January, so, uh, for some of those critical items, because that's when we were, we were ramping up and, you know, stockpiling of it, and they shut down all the supplies for us. So, uh, we're, we're basically going to run out what we have on hand until, uh, on, until we get some outside help here, okay? We've, we've attempted several times to, to order different supplies, and we're seeing that, that, that list of, uh, of controlled supplies has been increasing, ever-increasing. So that's the true, true picture of where we're at, okay?
All right. Thank you, Chief. That was very important. Thank you.
And, and I want to tell you that, you know, these, these challenges that, that we're facing here are not unique to us, and it's the forefront. Uh, Saturday afternoon at three o'clock, there was a very productive telephone, telephone call with, 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 uh, with the folks at the EOC. And the, all the issues were, number one was the impact on, on losing members, and the second was the PPE shortage, and some of the other, uh, other areas has to do with test results for people who have been, uh, test results for first responders, getting them prioritized, so we know where they stand, okay? So, uh, they, they, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's being addressed. That's the best I could say, okay?
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, you're welcome. Congratulations, Ben, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Chief, thank you very much.
You, you're welcome, Donna.
Any other questions?
Tell all the, tell all your, uh, if I did EMTs, we appreciate all their hard work and putting themselves out there. It, it's appreciated.
Thank you very much. That's, that's what we do, and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll all get, we'll all get through this, and, uh, okay?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Stay safe.
Yeah, safe drive home and wherever you're at, guys, because it's slick out there, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to the end of our agenda. Uh, anything else that you can think of, Chris?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Any, anything that anyone else wants to cover before we wrap up?
I just wanted to, you know, for the residents that are out there, you know, we live in a, uh, a tight-knit community where we're all looking out for each other, and, uh, I'm sure I speak with, uh, every member of the board, that we, we really appreciate everyone's efforts as far as helping out, you know, the Fire Department, for instance, for the donations and cooperation with our police and fire and the town administrations and all that stuff. So, thank you to the town, not again.
All slides. All right, well, if that's, uh, all we got, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Hi, Ben Bartlett, yes.
I, Donna Danus, yes.
Hi, Tony Dumas, yes.
Hi, John Warren, yes.
Hi, Tyler Eaton, yes.
And that is it. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Thank, thanks to all the rest of the board for your, your patience during this, uh, unusual meeting of ours.
Thank you for doing this, Tony.
Tony, Tony, you did great.
You too, Chris.
Great leadership in this, Tony, and, and Chris, you as well. Thank you to both of you.
Thank you, thank you all.
Bye, guys.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.